The first two meetings were short.
Weird.
I said this was your payback for the quick.
We'll send you on vacation, Anne. But then the mayor'd come up with something else, so we'll keep it.
Always, always, always.
Now, if you really want to, get hit with compliments until next week.
No, that's okay. We get it over with.
All right, you have seven o'clock. I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order and ask that the clerk please call Rol.
Jim Binaj.
Here.
Jeff Elspeth.
Here.
Jeff Paus.
Here.
Betty Martine.
Here.
Justin Smith.
Here.
We do have a quorum. Appreciate everybody being here, and I want to welcome everybody in the audience. We have a full room tonight, and I want to especially recognize the Troop 585 from Resurrection, the Boy Scout group that's here tonight working on their citizenship requirement. I think it's very fitting on a night where our president's giving the State of the Union. So, do want to welcome everybody from the Resurrection Troop, 585 Boy Scout Troop. And we're actually gonna call one of them up here in just a minute to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. But first, how we open up every single one of our council meetings is either with a silent prayer or an opening prayer. And tonight, honored to welcome Dr. Rob Lundstedt. If you'd come to the podium and lead us in prayer, please.
Good evening. Let's pray. Father, we come to you, and first of all, we thank you for your greatness and your goodness. Thank you for salvation through Jesus Christ. And Father, we thank you for the freedom that we have in this country to govern ourselves and to elect officials. And Father, we thank you that we can use this opportunity to not only bring success to our own lives and our own endeavors, but as well for the good of humanity and those around us. So, Father, we pray that with the freedoms that we have, that we will use them to bring glory to you and to benefit others. Father, we thank you for those that serve you in all different kinds of capacities. And so, Father, we ask that you would bless this city, bless these individuals that are here tonight. We give you thanks in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Now, please rise and join us in the saying of the Pledge of Allegiance. And I'm gonna ask that Chase Owings, did I say that correctly?
On.
If you can come forward, Bel Air resident and a sophomore at Cape Town Mount Carmel is going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
To defy, but the United States of America, and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. All right, we'll go ahead and get started with tonight's agenda. The first thing to come before council this evening is the consent agenda, which consists of the minutes from the last time we met, which was January 15, 2019. And that's the only thing in there.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I move to approve the consent agenda as listed and authorize the mayor to sign.
Well, second.
First and second. Any questions, comments, concerns? Hearing none, call for vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, item seven is a discussion and approval of appropriations ordinance 2019-03 in the amount of $399,641.53. I do want to point out that we made our annual workers' comp premium for the year, so that's in this appropriations ordinance. And the CCUA debt service was also paid for this month.
Mr. Mayor, I do have a question about the appropriation ordinance. In looking through the ordinance, it looked like there's about $5,000 attributed to tires for an F-450. It just seemed like a lot of money for tires. Maybe it's appropriate, but I just would like to confirm that. Was there other work needed on that truck?
We went through and reviewed all of our equipment, and we had a lot of tires that were needed for all of the public works equipment, so I know that we are spacing that out throughout the year. I have not seen the specific ordinance, so I cannot say for sure, but I know that there is, $5,000 was spent on tires, and I'm not sure if it was specifically for the F-450 or if it was for additional vehicles beyond that.
Yeah, it was spread throughout the ordinance, just not in one place. One place, one lane is $4,000, and other places it's $400.
Okay. Yeah, I know we're getting, there's multiple vehicles that needed it. I can certainly get you a list of all the vehicles if you would like.
I just wanted to make sure that, it just sounded like a lot of money for tires.
Yes. There's a lot of vehicles needing tires, so yes, thank you.
Thank you for the clarification. Appreciate it.
Any other questions for our staff? If not, I'm entering a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion. Do we approve the ordinance 1903?
Second.
First and second. Questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, we'll get right into the rest of our meeting, and we do have the agenda tonight, of course, consists of a presentation on the Woodlawn expansion. I know we're real excited to get towards that. We're gonna discuss supporting a letter of support. We're gonna look at some sewer mains that need rehab, and a lake that needs a fountain to control some algae, and we're gonna look at the legislative platform through LKM. That's all on tonight's agenda. But first, I'd like to go ahead and get started with the presentation from MKEC Engineers on the Woodlawn expansion. If you may to the podium. And this is something that's really exciting, the fact that we're having this presentation tonight. Seems like, my goodness, I mean, when I, five or six years, I can remember this conversation that it's coming, because WAMPO budget's out and plans out that far in advance on major road expansions and projects. And I appreciate the fact that WAMPO was able to look at our area and see that this is an area that was going to grow and has grown, and looking at major road improvements. The grant that we have received is to reconstruct Woodlawn from 37th to 45th. This includes the intersection at 45th. The funds are going to be available beginning next year in calendar year 2020. A number of months ago, the City of Bel Air, as a council, we hired MKEC engineers to research traffic data and estimate future needs and come up with proposals for lane width, intersection construction, turn lanes, et cetera, because there's a lot more that goes into roads than just putting down some concrete. A lot of things come into play with this. They've completed their work, and they're here to present their findings. And that's what we're here tonight, is to hear their findings. Do want the public know that probably what the end of February is, I think we're looking at, we're gonna have a open house, a time where the public can come in, make comments, hear the presentation, ask questions. And then, I would ask that the council that we workshop this in March, so that that'll be after we've heard from the public, and there'll be a survey monkey in the meantime, to really get the word out on what it is that our citizens are looking at. And this is, like I said, a major project that I'm excited that it's here. It's here, because we've been talking about this for quite a while. So, the presentation is to give us something to really think about as we move forward with the details. So, Jay, if you'd like to start, appreciate you being here. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you. Thank you for having us, and we're excited to be here, and we're excited about the project as well. We've put in a lot of hard work on it so far. We are at a conceptual stage, but we still have a lot of work to go. What we're gonna present tonight with me, I have, first of all, Greg Nelson's here in the front row. He's one of our roadway designers. Jason Gish, who you folks know, he's working on the project as well with us, as far as some of the aesthetic and some of the identity of the project. And then Steve Hoffener here is with our subconsultant, TEC, who is our traffic expert. And basically, what we're gonna present tonight is just, is go over the presentation in similar to what we plan to present to in the public meeting later in the month. There may be some changes, but we wanted to present this to you first to let you see what we're doing. The public meeting is going to be important for us to get, there's a lot of information we've got tonight, and it's going to be important to get that information to the public. As you noted, it's also a chance for us to get some information from the public. You mentioned the survey monkey. That's something we want to get up and running soon before the meeting, and then we want to leave it up and let people comment on and answer questions about the project after the meeting, because we think they're going to learn a lot about what we've done. So, at this point, we're gonna, I'll just let us get started. We do have a lot of information tonight. I'm gonna turn it over to Steve to start talking about the traffic report.
This evening, I wanted to give you a brief overview of the traffic information. There's a lot of detail in the traffic study itself, and it'll probably be forthcoming to you in draft form. But rather than getting bogged down in a lot of the details of it, I wanted to give you the overview of it to hit the high points of it. The first step that we did is to find what the design horizon is, and that's how far out do we want to look in terms of designing the roadway. A typical roadway, we look at a 20-year design horizon. The second step, then, is to try and determine, project traffic forward from today over a 20-year period to see how much traffic is going to, projected to be on that particular section of roadway, in this case, Woodlawn, 20 years from now. The way that we do that is we look at the historical perspective of the roadway, what has occurred over the last 20 years, 30 years, 40 years, as one perspective. The second perspective is to look at what could potentially develop in the general area that could impact the roadway, and combine those two together to then project traffic from today's traffic into the future. The third step is to count the traffic that's out there today, use that as the base traffic, and then make the 20-year projections. In this case, it would be 2038 traffic projections. After we did that, the projected flow, we did alternative analysis. I'll speak and introduce briefly the alternative analyses, the alternatives that we basically are looking at, and those are the alternatives that we'll be presenting to the public. Okay, so what I did initially was researched previous traffic counts, and there was quite a bit of information available from KDOT back to about 1994 on various sections of the roadway. And I showed charts of the various sections of the roadway and the counts that were available. And what I did is I calculated growth rates, compounded, they're basically compounded growth rates, but they're annual growth rates on a per-year basis for each of those sections. And the ones that are highlighted in yellow, I wanted to call your attention to particularly, because I want to speak to those this evening, and I think they have the most impact to, well, I use to make the projections going forward. The smaller the numbers are, the greater the projection percentages that you'll see. And sometimes you gotta be a little bit careful on that. In other words, if there's only 2,000 cars there and it grows to 4,000 cars, you're doubling your traffic, and so it can throw your perspective off a little bit on that. So, I've discounted that in some cases when we were looking at that. But the area up around the interchange, you can see that there is a fairly substantial growth rate in that area. But again, those are fairly small numbers. 5.9% per year is a very high growth rate, for example. As we come back down, if we look at north of 45th Street, still a fairly high growth rate of 4.9% per year. Woodlawn south of 45th Street is about 2.5% per year over that time period. It's a little shorter time period that we had counts available to us. And then Woodlawn south of Quail Ridge is in the 2.8% range. When I looked at all of those numbers, they started hovering around about a 3% per year growth rate. The second thing that we did is we looked at vacant tracts of land. This is a picture to show some of the land that could be developed. We looked at planning documents, both for the surrounding cities and cities to the north, as to what is projected that could be developed on those particular lands. And some of these are just educated guesses, because you're not positive exactly how that land would be developed. Commercial, retail, residential. And we made traffic projections from that, and then loaded the roadway system with those traffic projections. Up around the interchange, it's pretty much geared towards retail development in the future. Further south, it's residential with some multifamily projected in those areas. When I did that, and then projected that traffic back down on the section of Woodlawn that we're looking at, it also supported about a 3% per year growth rate on Woodlawn. So, both of those start supporting each other in the 3% range. And then the third thing that I looked at is the interchange at, to the north, the freeway to the north. That's a full interchange. It's going to attract traffic over the years to the north, and because of that, that'll attract traffic along Woodlawn Avenue, as opposed to like, for example, Rock to the east is still in that great interchange. It'll be an interchange at some point, but just the natural attraction to a full interchange currently makes Woodlawn a little bit more attractive. What I did is showed you a chart. If we assumed a 2% growth rate per year at various sections, starting with the 2018 average daily traffic on the roadway at different locations, what it would look like in 2038, a 3% growth rate, a 4% growth rate, and a 5% growth rate, just to show you some comparisons. And ultimately, what we chose is a 3% growth rate, the middle column on that, for our traffic projections. As I, and to kind of summarize, what we came to was that the land projections, taking that vacant land, that supported the 3%. The historical data supported the 3%, and that is what we used. When we use a 3% growth rate over a 20-year period, what that essentially does, if you take the 2018 traffic, is it increases it 80%. In other words, if you had 10,000 cars a day, you'd multiply that, you'd add 80% to it, so it'd be about 18,000 cars per day for 2038. And so, then we take that and all of our turning movement counts, our intersection counts, we project those forward for the AMPKR and a PMPKR, and we do the analysis for the PKRs and today, to see how the traffic's working at all the intersections currently. And then we look at how all the intersections worked in 2038, based on the various alternatives that we analyzed. And that is essentially how the traffic report was done. Just in a broad brush standard, when a roadway is two to three lanes, such as Woodlawn, if we went with the three-lane concept, when the average daily traffic starts approaching 18,000 to 20,000 cars per day, a three-lane roadway can comfortably handle about 20,000 cars per day, in a broad brush standpoint. Now, each intersection gets analyzed differently, and I'm just kind of giving you generalities from perspective, so that you can kind of see where Woodlawn is in 2038. And once it starts exceeding that 20,000, then it starts getting to where it's starting to push the capacity of that roadway without looking at each one of the intersections individually. to push the capacity of that roadway without looking at each one of the intersections individually. If, I mean, I'm going to go forward just a minute. If you look at that 3% growth rate and the various sections on there, you can see that the southern portion of that, north of the railroad tracks, is kind of pushing that 22,000 range. So we're right at the threshold in 20 years from now of a three-lane concept. So essentially, what the traffic report says is that the three-lane concept will work, but it's going to be, in 2038, if all the traffic comes that we're projecting, and it could actually be a little bit less than that, we're going to be at the upper thresholds of a three-lane section. Or another way of saying it is, three-lane section could actually limit the amount of traffic on Woodlawn, and it may have to, a little, if those traffic projections are truly correct, then some of that traffic may have to go somewhere else in a three-lane concept. Okay? But we believe, I believe, a three-lane section could work in this location. So, I thought it would go backwards, how do we go backwards? There we go. So the concepts, then, that we evaluated was a three-lane concept along, and what will be presented tonight, is a three-lane concept with a continuous left turn lane along there, and then a four or five-lane section, essentially from the railroad tracks to the north up to 45th Avenue, East 45th North. From the railroad tracks essentially south, that pretty much has to be a five-lane section to accommodate all the driveways along there and the amount of traffic that currently and will be projected to the south there. It's already heavy in that area. So we're recommending that that be a five-lane section. Then, at the intersection to the north at 45th Avenue, East 45th North Avenue and Woodlawn, we looked at both a roundabout concept and a signalized intersection. We looked at a signalized intersection, a three-lane concept, and a signalized intersection, a five-lane concept. And all, actually, all of those will function. The five-lane concept in 2038 will function better, but they will all function, the three-lane concept will function in the upper levels of the capacity, whereas a five-lane section will function in what we'd call Level Service C, which would be with plenty of adequate, lots of available capacity for even more future growth. And those are the concepts that we're going to go into, and they'll go into a little bit more detail here in just a minute. And then the last thing I just want, I'll go through this real quickly, is we also looked at all the turn lane locations, how long left turn lanes need to be. We provided all that information from a design standpoint. One of the questions that came up in the interview is where right turn lanes are needed. We use a, generally 100 to 125 vehicles per hour during a peak hour to justify a right turn lane. I just wanted to show you the 2038 PM traffic projections at each of the intersections, and you can see that there really aren't any right turns that have to be built northbound on Woodlawn. You've got one location that's 100 vehicles, which is here, Harrington, but you could or you could not put that in. The other intersections, this is, there we go. You can see that the other right turns all fall well below the 100 vehicles, just for your information. Up at 45th, you can see that the eastbound right turn is high and the northbound right turn. The capacity analysis says those right turns, if it's signalized, don't have to be built. There's adequate capacity without the right turns, but the right turns would make the intersection more efficient. So those are the types of things that we provide from an informational standpoint, and then we'll make those final decisions after public input and after a lot of the review from the public and also from council input.
I'm going to talk about just some of the geometrics, just the different concepts we're looking at as a whole, and then some of the, just the specific details that are really common to all of the options. What we're looking at here, I want to clarify, when we say three-lane, what we're really talking about is a northbound through lane, a southbound through lane, and then that center lane can either be a continuous left turn lane, a chicken lane, it could actually be a dedicated left turn lane, or it can actually be spots where there aren't, where their turns aren't possible, we could even have a median in there. But we call all of that situation for the rest of this presentation as a three-lane. And similarly, adding an extra through lane in each direction, so we'll have, is the five-lane option we're looking at. We're still looking at the same median treatment, we're looking at two lanes northbound, two lanes southbound. What I'm showing here is essentially our first alternative we're looking at. This is what we call the three-lane option with a signalized intersection. And I'm going to get the pointer out and just point to a few things here. Here we see 37th Street is here, and what we, we break the page so we could get some of our information up into a bigger size. So this dash line here is a match line that comes down there. North, on all of these displays, north will always be to the right. So we start at 37th here, we have the railroad tracks here, here's where our, the pond is, and as we move forward, here's the Bel Air Park, and then we get up to the intersection of 45th. On this concept, we see, as Steve talked about, we have the five-lane section south of the railroad track. Just something to point out, in this section, the only thing we're considering in the median is a continuous dual left turn lane. There are so many driveways along here that basically a complete five-lane section is what we're looking at. We transition, in this option, we transition from five lanes to three lanes at the tracks. I'll get into a little more detail on that in a second. That three-lanes will continue onto the north all the way to 45th Street. And as you see, we have some sections where we have the green showing possible median placement. We have some continuous dual left turn lane, and we have some even just left turn lanes that are just marked like a standard left turn. Then in this concept, we get to the intersection, we have a standard intersection, and we'll get into a little more detail on that as well. Talking about the transition from five to three, what our concept shows is we will have, we will lose both the extra lanes before we hit to the railroad track. And there's a reason for that. Basically, where we have three lanes, we can get through with the existing gates there now. Where we have five lanes, we'll have to do, get the railroad a lot more involved and redo the gates. We can talk on that a little bit. Basically, how we drop those lanes, the five lanes, this outside northbound lane will turn into a right turn only into 39th Street. And then once we're south of the track for the southbound lane, we'll just pick up the lane. We can pick it up before this driveway, we can pick it up further, there's still some geometrics on that we need to work through. Now we'll go to the second concept. This concept is very similar to the first, that we have the signalized intersection at 45th, we have the five-lane continuous up to the railroad tracks, but in this concept, that five-lane continues all the way through. So we're looking at a true five-lane option. We look at the same median treatments, the same places where we have left turn lanes, where we have dual chicken lanes all throughout, so the only two, the only differences in those two concepts is the number of lanes north of the railroad track. Now, another concept we're looking at goes back to that five-lane section here, and again, that's common and all, but we go back to the three-lane south of the tracks, just like we did in the very first concept I showed. Really, the only difference here is instead of having a signalized intersection, we have the roundabout. And one thing just about the roundabout, we'll get into some more detail about that, but the roundabout has, we're showing one concept, it itself has several concepts as far as what the geometrics look like. That's something we'll get, if we would go with this option, we've worked on that throughout the design. And then the fourth concept we show is basically the same thing as the last concept, but we go back to the five-lane section here, and we continue the five-lane, just like in the concept two. The only difference in this roundabout here, we have a three-lane section on the first one I showed. Here, since we have five lanes, there would be a second lane in the roundabout to receive all that traffic. The footprints are the same of the two roundabout options, that extra, the additional lane we would add would actually be on the inside, and that roundabout would be big enough, even if we built one lane and we needed a second lane later, the geometrics would accommodate that additional lane with the right radius. This is probably the most interesting slide we'll see. Out of those four concepts I showed, in that order, here's our preliminary construction costs. Everything I'm going to talk about as far as the concepts, cost-wise, are included in here. There are some things we could take out to make that cheaper. This includes, this would even include the work from the railroad to update that crossing if we need to do that. The only thing not shown in these numbers, there's some waterline work and some sanitary sewer work, and I wanted to keep those out, those are separate costs, and I didn't want those to be shown, weighted in those numbers. So as we see, and I, the numbers are what they are. The difference between the signalized intersection and the roundabout, there's a slight cost for the two roundabout options over their comparative of just regular standard intersection. And as expected, on the signalized intersection of three lanes north of the tracks versus five lanes, the cost increases quite a bit, about 1.2 million. And half of that number, or at least half of that number, is due to railroad upgrading the railroad crossing. So we have a real advantage if we can sit and look at a three-lane option and not go to five-lane. That's basically the single biggest cost. Then there's more pavement as well. The difference between the three-lane roundabout and the five-lane roundabout is not quite as far apart, and one reason is, it's just the additional pavement in a five-lane over a three-lane is quite a bit more, where going from the two-lane roundabout to the one-lane actually is a little, not very much extra cost. But anyway, we can break down those numbers and provide what exactly how we got there to Ann, and we'll talk about that as we continue to go along as well. Now we'll talk about several specifics that are the same regardless of what option are, just wanted to go over these real quick. Here we start at 37th Street, and we are starting the pavement work on the north side of the intersection. The advantage of that is where traffic control, just disruption to the public, will be a lot less by staying out of that intersection. Understand that intersection belongs to the city of Wichita, and we don't want to touch it anyway. One thing that will have to change is now that we would have five lanes north, right now, south on Woodlawn, that fifth lane is blocked out. It's just pavement marking. It was something, I don't have the cost to put that in, to do that work as part of this project, but I would assume the city of Wichita would want to do that. They may even want it part of the project, it's a pretty minor cost, and I would think it's something they would gladly pay to have done. The other thing we show is, this picture's old, but right now with the 37th Street project, we added on-street bike lanes. We would like to connect those bike lanes up with our proposed bike trail that we're going to end with this project. I'm moving a little further north. We're looking at the five-lane section south of the tracks, and as you see, we've got our continuous turn lane here. We've got a lot of driveways we're connecting up. Couple things about this slide is, first of all, drainage. We've got drainage flues coming out of parking lots, we've got a big flume, a lot of drainage here, we've got some inland stumping into the ditch. One thing we're going to do with this project is fill in all the ditches, all the big ditches we have out there from one end to the other, and put in a closed storm sewer system. So that's going to make the project appear a lot nicer, and it should improve the drainage. But one thing that's a little tough is we've got to capture all of these little drainage areas. We've got some ditches up here. Didn't show them all, but we know we have to tie those into the storm sewer and make everything drain properly. I mentioned the bike path earlier. We are going to add sidewalk and a 10-foot shared-use bike path to the project. Right now, we are proposing the sidewalk be on the east side and the shared-use path on the west side. That's something that, there's some advantages both ways or another, that's, right now, we think the west side's the best advantage, but it's certainly something we're not making a decision on until the public gets a chance to input on that. Moving further north, let me get to the railroad track, and I kind of touched on this issue. We're showing the five-lane option here, and you can see where the existing gate signals are. They're going to be in the way, thank you. And that's something we will have to coordinate with the U D Pacific Railroad to move, to move those gates back. That's an expensive process to do, because not only do the gates have to move, they usually upgrade the signal house and all the signal wiring, there's a lot of safety equipment with all of that. What we're running into on other projects we're working on with the U P now, the cost of doing that can approach 3/4 of a million dollars. Those costs are figured into those costs I just showed you for the options or the wide So if we go with the three-lane, right now, we have a two-lane road with some wide shoulders, and then the gates sit back a little bit. If we go to three-lane, we're not widening the road there, so we're pretty confident that we can, if we go with the three-lane route, we can fit that in there, the existing gates will still be viable, and we won't have to go through all that process. So that's something, as we get a design and we actually have some plans we can send to the railroad, we're really going to coordinate with them to get, to work through that. Couple other things the railroad's going to require us to do is, one is put a raised median in there, and that's something that gets done a lot now on these railroads. Basically, so as a gate comes down, that raised median will prevent the driver to come up here and drive around the gates. So that's pretty standard, pretty standard work that we do now. The only problem with that is where, and again, these are negotiable, how long those are, but this is the driveway into the city, into the pump station and the city property. That's going to make left turns in there tough, so that's something we know we have to work through. Sidewalks, we're showing outside the paving here, and on a few projects we're working with the U P now, they're actually asking us to move the sidewalks away from the street, and they won't be within, contained within the gates. That is what makes this three-lane portion work, is if we have three lanes in here and the sidewalk's going to have to be gated, our roadway's wide enough now already, so we're not changing that. Moving a little further north, here we have the bridge across the creek, and what we're showing here, and this is reflected in all the cost estimates, right now, we're planning on replacing the structure. It's not necessarily due to the hydraulics of the channel, but as we lower the road to put curb and gutter, where the roadway comes down. And as it comes across here, now we're getting on top of that existing box. What we're proposing to replace it with is what's called a grade structure, where at the top of the reinforced box culvert is actually part of the roadway surface, and that gets us a little more room, or we can use that, we don't have to be so far above it. The reason why it's important to lower the road here is if we raise the road up with the curb and gutter, now we're pushing water back down Quail Ridge and here into the vet center, we're really going to dunk some water on them. We can look at picking it up with storm sewer system, but also, it's just going to be an awkward where water runs off the road and down the driveway. We, what's out there today is we have the ugly metal guardrail. We're proposing for that to go away. And at this, with this configuration we have here, we will, we would put back a nice concrete protection rail with tapered ends like we see a lot, in a lot of places throughout town, or throughout the city of Wichita and in the other neighboring cities. Then that allows us to hold the sidewalk in behind there, and the sidewalk is protected from the vehicle or traffic, and then on the outside of the sidewalk, we would have a nice pedestrian rail. One other option we have here is we can extend the box out even further, and doing that, move the sidewalk out, and we might be able to get rid of the rail altogether. I'm not sure we can get through that. KDOT would have some say in that as well. We have clear zones to worry about, and just, even if you have the clear zone distance where you're putting the drop-off, the drop-off may be big enough to where we just can't make that work. We're moving further north, and here we have, we're looking at the frontage road that sits on the west side of the street. What we're showing and what's reflected in our estimates is to eliminate the frontage road in front of the park and in front of the fire station. That allows the Stanbury intersection to become a lot nicer. Gunnison really stays the same, it just kind of turns into a street, and we would probably, you know, make that nice and curve that. Perryton stays the same. We talked about even the idea of getting rid of all the frontage road, but that puts all of these driveways out onto this, out onto Woodlawn, and then we just, we do not recommend that idea at all. The costs and you get, the The costs, and the cost you have seen reflect the reconstruction of this portion of the frontage road. We recognize people are using the frontage road in front of the park as parking, and so what we're also showing is some off-street parking on Genuson Street to replace that. That cost too is reflected in the estimate, so. Zooming in a little bit, we have, today we have just the flashing yellow ball, no designated space to where the crossing actually is. We're proposing to throw one in here and to put it, basically, this is kind of in the middle of the park, and we see the existing sidewalk that comes out, we think that's the ideal place to put one. We talked about maybe we want to put two of those. We think more than one is too many, too much, so we're proposing to put one here. What you see here is a little jog. What that does is as the pedestrian comes out here, it forces them to turn the corner and actually look at the oncoming traffic. And so that's something we want to incorporate into our crossing. Now, the question that remains is, what's that crossing? What's the traffic protection or the pedestrian protection at that crossing? And there's a number of options. We all have seen that exist, just the regular pedestrian traffic signal. We're kind of getting away from those, and there's something called the HOX system that the city of Wichita has put some up, so there's several around town, and that's one where the lights stay off until someone actually comes and pushes the button, and then it's the flashing lights, and it has an overhead mast arm. Flashing lights come on, and then the flash, after the flashing lights flash yellow for a little bit, then a red light comes on. Once the time is passed and the person has crossed, then the light shuts off again. So those are, those are safer and more convenient than these traditional signals. Another style is there's some, what's called a rapid, rectangular rapid flashing beacon, which you push the button, and it just, a real intense light flashes. You can put several of those signs up if you have, especially if you have the median situation here. 17th and Woodlawn has that rapid flashing signal. There's still some evaluation we need to do. We also think that's an important thing to get public feedback on, on what the appropriate, not only the appropriate level of protection here, but whether or not we have it in the right spot, or whether or not we need more than one. Okay, at this time, I'm going to turn over and let Greg talk some about the actual intersection at 45th Street.
All right. I wanted to kind of talk about what we're going to have for the intersections here. Be fairly brief on this, but basically, we're going to have four configurations, possible configurations here. Two of them would be the standard signalized intersections. Basically, what we're showing here is a five-lane section, but we don't have the three-lane section here, but it'd be very similar. Signalized intersection, then, all of the, in every configuration, we'd have a left-turn lane at each leg, at each approach to the intersection. With the signalization, then you allow having a protected and permitted phases for left turns, so that those left turns could be made without, you know, without having the oncoming traffic, or once that's passed, then, you know, you could have a permissive phase there too. So phasing would allow you to tailor that to what's needed at that intersection. The other configuration we have here would be with the roundabout. And here we're showing the two-lane roundabout here, that would go with the five-lane section. Some of the advantages of that would be that it could eliminate your signal delays that you might have, especially when you're in an off-peak time period, you know, rush hour and stuff like that. Signalized intersection, you know, everybody's used to waiting at the stoplight and going through. You get into the off-peak times, and you approach that intersection, you've got a red light. If you get to a signal, a roundabout intersection, you know, you can only just pass right through One of the other advantages of that is that you've got a traffic calming effect. So, coming up to the intersection, you've got, you know, it slows traffic down from every direction. A lot of times, you don't have to stop, you can just pass on through. Gives an opportunity for landscaping. Could be an element that, you know, could be like a gateway option to the city, and Jason's going to talk a little bit more about that in a moment. And I'm going to go back to the signalized intersection here for just a second. All right. One thing about the signalized intersection, of course, everybody's familiar with it, you know, and everybody knows that it works. So, it's tried and true, and we know that, you know, through the traffic studies, these configurations are going to work. So, we looked at that. Both options are something that's going to work. It's going to be kind of a decision that public input is probably going to have some input into what, what configuration is ultimately chosen. I guess one of the other things, well, let's go ahead and just jump to this last one here. This is kind of a graphic presentation of what you get with a roundabout versus a standard signalized intersection. As far as the conflict points that are introduced, and that's one of the, one of the features that a roundabout has, is you've reduced a number of conflict points in the intersection. If you look at this, whenever you're making a left turn at a standard intersection, you've introduced a lot of places where oncoming traffic, you know, you could have a collision or just conflicts that are created there. With a roundabout, you actually, here, you only have eight conflict points there, and one of the things that happens there is you eliminate, basically, your T-bone type or your head-on type collisions. Even if you do have collisions, they're usually more of a side-by-side type of thing. So it doesn't necessarily reduce the number of accidents, but it usually reduces the severity of the accident, especially safety-wise, especially in terms of injuries and things like that. All of these configurations that we're showing here would maintain access to the businesses immediately adjacent to this intersection here. So you can see here, even though in some places you can see that there is a median in front of those, both of these businesses to the south have entrances onto Woodlawn and 45th Street, so you've got the opportunity to come out. If you don't see directly where you want to go, for example, you can use a roundabout to circle through and go back into the direction you have. And then in the signalized intersection here, it's maintaining that, that access for all of those locations, so. Oh, okay, sorry. Yeah. And the little pink shading that we have here showing is some of the right-of-way, additional right-of-way that we need to be taken in this with a roundabout. It's really fairly small, and I know the configuration we're showing here, there's room for tweaking this, shifting it around to make it fit, you know, different configurations here, but overall, we're talking about a fairly small amount of right-of-way that would need to be taken. Going back to the three-lane and five-lane configurations we show here, we set the three-lane up so that if they were ever to expand that, this roundabout could just be expanded to the inside and wouldn't need a total reconstruction of that roundabout, so that was one of the things that we looked at in the initial finding. Go ahead and turn this back over to Jay.
Just wanted to touch real quickly on construction traffic control. And at this point, we don't know what concept we're going through. That will have some effect on the traffic control, but generally, what we, how we think this road's going to be built is we're going to have to build one half of the road at a time while we keep traffic on the other half. Unfortunately, the existing roadway is a three-lane, is a narrow two-lane road with some shoulders. Most likely, whatever we do, we can only have one three-lane of traffic during construction. That's, the other option would be to close the road completely in sections, and we think that's just going to be too hard of a sell-on here. Again, some of that may change as we get into the design and we know what option we're going after. As far as what direction that road would be if we had one lane of road, what makes sense is south of the railroad track, we probably have enough width there that we can maintain a road one direction, one lane in each direction. So if we have a road, a lane going north to the south end of the railroad track, we pretty much have to let them maintain that lane, so we're talking about making that one lane of traffic northbound throughout construction. And then as we switch and get to the other side, we would have to do that same thing again, but still maintain probably that northbound. If, one advantage of a five-lane over a three-lane is you can probably build enough road in the first phase to allow, to put two lanes of traffic on it later. And so your inconvenience of only having one lane is only half of the project rather than the entire project. Again, the other options we could look at are closing the road down in sections. That may speed up construction in those sections, but we don't think, you know, we recognize there are several neighborhoods here that have only one access point, and we have to maintain those at all time. If we do the one lane, where we keep one lane, we can keep those, the access to those neighborhoods open at all time. Just the other thing, with the driveway configurations we have, most of them are wide enough, where most businesses have multiple driveways, we will be able to keep traffic open to every business along here throughout construction. So, as we get into the design, we'll know, have some more details on that, so. Can I let Jason take over and talk about some more fun stuff as far as the project and so forth?
So that was the technical half of the presentation. So I'm going to lighten it up a bit here. But, but in all seriousness, while all those functional things and the technical engineering side of this project is extremely important to it, one thing that we talked to you a lot about before was, was how do we make this a place? What opportunities do we have to make this feel like, you know, our city? What's important for us to instill into this roadway project to make it last? What are the things that people are going to remember about it? Their tangible things that people see? And, and it's going to be the things that, that in a lot of ways, the aesthetic treatments and the way we connect things together. So, I just wanted to kind of talk about just sense of place, opportunities we have through these placemaking. So, this is going to kind of run you through, but a little, a little video, but these, we have an opportunity to have center medians, and with other concept we do, whether it's three-lane or five-lane. And I'm kind of concentrating on the north end because there's just, it's more residential. There'll be a retaining wall we kind of went by, that's in one section of the project. We have opportunities along the park for, for what I'll call some green initiatives. We have the crosswalk space, that's a threshold that we'll go over. And then continuing north, we'll eventually arrive at the intersection there at 45th. And in this case, we presented the roundabout only because it, it has an opportunity that a typical intersection doesn't unless you do something special around that intersection. Not saying it can't be done, but a roundabout's unique from that perspective of creating kind of more of a, I don't know, it just gives you opportunities to do a lot of things within it that are, that are more beautification-related. So this first element where we have the center median, there's lots of ways that can be treated. Most of the medians that you'll find around our metro area typically are, they're just, they're just lawns, and there's nothing wrong with that, that's what this can be. But, you know, maybe we consider being a little more green, a little more, you know, we're the city of the future. That's part of our whole slogan here. So, how do we do something, or what opportunities might we have to be, to be thinking of future? When you, when you have a more diverse landscape, if you will, you're going to have more opportunities to do benefits for wildlife, benefits for just collection of water, and then some will argue there's, you know, there's going to be different aesthetic benefits. Some they like, some they dislike. So these are just showing various, different aspects of treatments. This is one actually in Kansas City that's quite simple. They just simply quit mowing it, and it's a native period, short grass, native period. Perryson Park going north to Interstate 10. Areas where we don't have landscape, there's opportunities to do some sort of hardscape. It's more than just plain jam concrete, and the big thing is just trying to create contrast. So whether it's pavers, or whether it's some concrete, or something like that, there's just opportunities for details that just make this more than just a transportation corridor. Interestingly enough, there's a small hill there along the cross from the park, or almost to the park, south of the Bessie Street, where we do have to, the right-of-way's narrow enough that we're going to have to do something vertically with a wall, so, you know, what can that be? Can it be a core block limestone wall? Can it be a concrete wall? Doesn't look like so. There's lots of options there, but once again, it's those tactile-type details that people have an opportunity to be moving beside and visualizing. Now, this is probably the most interesting thing I wanted to kind of talk to you about, and it's kind of that future thing. So, while we have a tremendous amount of water that actually travels through the ditch sections there now along Woodlawn, there's an opportunity to still utilize some of that water. Anytime you take and put water into a pipe, there's tremendous advantages of trying to improve some of the aesthetics when you're in a narrow section like this, of getting that water through there, making it work efficiently. But then you miss the opportunity to actually, that water has a good purpose, and anytime you can use it to water the grass that's in that edge or anything like that, you have an opportunity to implement green infrastructure, I'll call it. And that's basically trying to utilize the rainwater runoff and absorb that or use it for the benefit, beautification of the roadway. So, some examples of what that would look like is, this actually has some stuff that's happening in the median too, but you, you start to utilize simple things like curb cuts or something on the edges of the gutter, where you allow that water to go back and flood an area, and it doesn't operate any different than it would in a typical curb, it's just going to flood that area, and then it's going to continue downstream. I don't see one in this picture, but I'm sure there's one there somewhere, where there's a typical inlet that you would have, and it would function for the bigger storms. This is, you know, not necessarily our project, but in the more urban area at the south end of our project, I just want you to be aware that there's ways to try to implement landscape or things that help enhance and make this feel like a street for all of our uses, not just the vehicles. So there's, there's examples there. You know, they're having a little bit of fun in some of these examples here where, you know, they have some playful things. They took some railroad ties, this must have been on a railroad project or something. These guys here are showing signage, explaining what they did. There's opportunities in kind of that flume-type system where we can catch things like bottles and trash and junk like that before we just flush it right on down into the, to the waterways. And then, and then the benefit of landscape and things like that is it does a tremendous job of removing things like the metals and chemicals and stuff like that that are on the roadways, and they actually process it faster, or a way to process some of that before it goes off into more major riverways, waterways. So just more examples. Once again, there's an opportunity, small little details where maybe near the park, you can explain, what is this stuff that's been done? Why, why is this good? What benefit does it have to us as a community? Couple things, these are just, you'll find in there in your booklets, but, you know, the, this green infrastructure, basically, there's ways to, ultimately, you're taking water, you're using it, you're not just pushing it right on downstream to the Mississippi, you're trying to reduce flooding. It's supporting wildlife, it's doing a lot of things for the pollinators, things of that nature. At the crosswalk, we've got a couple different examples here, but, you know, once again, there's an opportunity to do something different with the paver that feels more pedestrian, you know, with a paver or concrete or whatever, even paint, that can make it feel more pedestrian scale. So even if we end up with, with the large linear crosswalk striping there, something, you know, we can be creative with that. It can be lots of things. That's all I'm trying to say with the crosswalk. And then, of course, we have our trails that we're going to have along this project. And then of course, we have our trails that we're going to have along this project. So maybe someday somebody comes along and says, hey, along that pond, wouldn't it be great if on our shared use path, we have a spot where families can pause for a moment, look out over the pond that's there, you know, get some water down them. So there's just opportunities that, that we need to consider that could happen. Logos, a lot of places to create a district or an identity for a community, they literally will just plug in a little logo or something into the pavement or into some vertical column or something that says, hey, you've entered Bel Air. And of course, shared use path will have this large, this large pathway that's going to link us to a whole bunch of parts of the community that right now there's no walkway there. So it's, that's going to be huge, huge change in the majority. And then just signage as, as the city continues to make improvements and connectivity for pedestrians. This is just a city of Wichita information right out of a book that they have, Wayfinding. Are there little details that we should be thinking of that help us pull all this together and speak to the, the things that we have here, the amenities we have in the community by creating some sort of signage? Kind of a kit of parts, if you will, so different things. We have the same benches that we start to utilize, things of that nature. So you can see the place we built. And then Jay had mentioned the crossing, the road, the box culvert that's there. Traditionally, obviously on bigger waterways and such, we used to do some really neat things with structures or things that were fairly memorable that you would, you know, whether it was an old truss bridge, different things like that. We don't have a great, a big structure or waterway we're crossing, but there's opportunities to do something. And while these are showing kind of exteriors where they're not as visible on our project, the handrail detail or a column or just anything that we do can start to speak something unique to that crossing. So these are just different examples in the community that speak to that. And then of course, this here, to me, this is a big opportunity, whether it's an intersection or the roundabout where you could really create a gateway, a memorable moment that people are going to know exactly where you're at. I think they already know where the Catholic Care Center is. That's a great marker in the community that, you know, you can, you can just see that you have this big fun green space in the, in the center as opposed to conventional intersection. And so obviously there's tons of examples throughout the country and elsewhere of what these can be. Here's one that's local in Andover. This one here, they have flags out there. This is one up on that Prairie Star Parkway where they have some artwork and some architectural columns and, you know, just heavy landscape. It's a kind of a native landscape, so it's easy to take care of. And then somewhat like it's been done in the roundabouts here, I know they're a little bit different configuration here in Central Park, but there's opportunities for whether it's sculpture or artwork or whatever, some type of stuff that's in reference. So keep in mind that we haven't, while the roadway and all the things are very important, we want this thing to be sustainable through time. And I know whether, whether three lane or five lane is our ultimate configuration, keep in mind that as Steve had mentioned, it's kind of one of those things with roadways, they're being removed in certain parts of the country because we've also learned that we got to be careful with what we create with roadways. So there's a balance there on, on what we do. So how this road, how this looks will make a big impact on how we as a community feel about in the future. And if you put some of these tangible quality of life things into it, along with the function of the vehicular travel, I think we'll have a very successful project that people, you know, 30 years from now, as things continue to mature, they're, they're going to be very proud of it. So with that, if you had any questions for us, or I know we've taken up a tremendous amount of your time, but it's a lot of, lot of feed in that mouth.
Well, I just want to say, I appreciate you guys being here. And I know, like you said, you guys have been working on this a long time and we certainly have been anticipating this. And just need to see, you know, when you look at this packet, the presentation, everything that goes into play. Like we said earlier, it's not just putting down a road. And this is a, a great opportunity. So I thank you for this information and just want to remind everybody again in the audience and also listening at home that later this month, we will have the open house. We will have the survey because we definitely want to hear from the citizens. There's a couple of things that really stood out to me. I was amazed that the price difference wasn't anywhere near as much as what I had assumed, which is why we had you as experts to tell us these things. So I do appreciate the fact we have all of this information that we can digest, we'll let the public digest. And then it'll probably be in March that we'll workshop this and before you know it, we can see construction started. But yeah, lots of, lots of opportunities here and lots of variables. And I appreciate you giving us all the different options too. Like you mentioned how, you know, with railroad crossing with, you know, adjacent between all the different bridges and grasses, I never imagined there'd be this many options, but lots of things to play with here. And so I want to thank you guys for that.
Yeah, I do have a question. On the hydraulics through that box culvert, is there, as you know, there are some flooding issues upstream from that. Do you see any opportunity that we can maybe reduce some of that possibility of flooding through there?
We're still looking at that and we don't have that analysis complete yet. We have found some interesting. And that's one thing that has slowed that portion down. We still think there are some opportunities to project. KDOT would probably not participate in that, but we're still hopeful that there's some solutions we can do to help that out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity to be here.
With that, we will move to citizens' concerns portion of the meeting. If there's anyone in the audience wishing to address counsel on any of the agenda items, they may come forward this time. Seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and move us into reports then and we will start with...
No real report, just nine months. It was supposed to be here in November and then December and then January and now it's February.
And to, I attended the Kansas Municipalities Local Government Day in Topeka on January 23rd and I appreciate your support on allowing me to attend with two, well, I met with one representative and there was a snow event up there and wouldn't let us into the Capitol Building until 11 o'clock and my meeting was scheduled before 11:00. Anyway, but they do, are two representatives and two senators who, and the Heartland Flyer. As you know, Southwest Chief runs from Chicago to Los Angeles, but there were some significant infrastructure problems with that, that road bed. And BSNF told Amtrak that they, a year or so ago, that they were not going to maintain that road for 79, funding and has spent or is in the process of spending about $100 million to upgrade that track clear through Kansas and Colorado and into New Mexico. So that's a cool thing that they're getting done. The Heartland Flyer is a track, a railroad that runs from Dallas to Oklahoma City. Wichita is the largest market in the country that Amtrak does not serve. So their, Amtrak is interested in serving Wichita and bringing the Heartland Flyer up through Wichita to Newton so that it could, it could connect with the Southwest Chief. So that, that startup cost, they're estimating about $125 million. They're still trying to figure out how to fund that and get that going. But there is one talk about maybe reducing the speed of the train to 60 miles an hour so they don't have to do so much infrastructure work. But anyway, there's more detail in the report. I won't go into all that detail now. You're welcome to read it. Having any questions, please feel free to ask me, okay?
Appreciate you braving the weather and being there. I know I had a brief conversation with Councilman Benage earlier that day and he's like, yep, I'm already here. So you made sure it happened. Yep. All righty.
Oh, well, I did the first half of the plant tour at the sewer complex on the 19th, but I didn't go through all that stuff because I've been there so many times. I was with the show presents, they had 59 in their cast. It was a three hour show. A chance to go to any of their other places that are coming up. You might want to take your wife or girlfriend or whatever because it was, and the seats were very, very comfortable there a little bit. I attended the senior club luncheon on, and at night because of the weather and et cetera. And Tasha, the new senior director, really liked it. After the meeting was over, we played White Elephant Bingo and I got a gift from me and he asked me if I wanted to tour the new offices that they're making. Oh, they're nice. I'd like to have whoever's making that come to my house. But Tristan was standing there and she asked me what I thought of the painting and et cetera. And I said, well, I think it's very nice. And she said, what do you want to tour? So I got to tour. She took me on a tour. Boy, I don't know who's doing all this fancy stuff, but it, it's really making our city hall beautiful. The furniture, eh, it's okay. But it's blue and that's the color of Bel Air. So that was all right. And, and the, oh, because I really like it. I told Ty, we need to move it out there where the silver one is. But they've got plans, so, but that's all I have, Mayor.
All right, I appreciate it. Councilman Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have too much this evening. I was able to attend the CCUA tour with councilmember Martine and Haas and the mayor, and Elsoph and the mayor. And that was very informative. It was really interesting to see all the work that goes on there. That's quite an intricate process. And I know as councilmember Elsoph has reported, there's going to be some probably pretty large capital projects upcoming that we're going to need to support. And so I think having that understanding of how that works and where the, where the constraints are in that plan are going to help, help me understand what the ask is as we get into those discussions. So big thanks to Randall for taking the time to give us that tour.
Councilman Elsoph?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I second everything councilmember Smith said about the, and you know, those guys are out there making sure we got water when we turn on our faucets and turn in season. We elected Mr. Mayor David Austin to be the chairman of the CCUA. Ken Lee, who I think he is here in the audience, he is vice chairman. And the treasurer secretary is Brandy Bailey and she's one of the representatives from Park City that's on the CCUA board. We had a check payment that CCUA made to, there's been a kind of a lingering project we've had from the upgrades to the CCUA. We cut a big check that was about $125,000 rounded for work that had been completed, but there's still some ongoing work. So there's still some ongoing payment that's going to be coming out there. But that was a big, that was a big payout that we just agreed to complete. And also we had an unsolicited proposal for property and casualty insurance. And what the property and CCUA also owns throughout Park City and Bel Air. And so this new insurance that we agreed to includes a comprehensive audit of all the assets of CCUA. I guess just over the years, the insurance has been just kind of a general estimate and there hasn't been a read of all of the assets. So that audit is going to be taking place. And then at the end of that audit, if there's some adjustment to the insurance that is needed, the company we went with is going to be flexible and adjusting that appropriately. So that was kind of a big, or last month. And then also just kind of a fun thing, they, the manager there wanted to push forward kind of a public friendly initiative to help educate the public about CCUA a little bit. And one of those things is a public service materials from Orange County, California. They put together some, basically some handout material and some brochures that they call what to flush. And in case you're wondering, it's pee, poop and paper.
And that's it?
Three peas. That's it. And no, no wipes, please. Right, Anne? No wipes. And then the last item we had discussed there was, we're sort of in the process of getting that worked out. Basically that's getting our ducks in a row for the legalities of the property line and the potential sale of that fire station.
Thank you. And I have no formal report this evening, but the tour on the 19th of the CCUA, I think that was what, my goodness, what the coldest Saturday we've had. And just let it be known, we had one member from Park City, councilmember Bailey, but from here, yeah, we had councilmember, like councilmember Smith said, yeah, we had four of us there. So, and, and there is a selfie of councilmember Smith, Elsoph and I in the sewer. Not in the sewer, by the sewer. Wow. And the headworks and the headworks, but yeah, and that's another one of those things. Yeah, just going through all the different buildings and where, and this is stuff that by the time it's made it, you know, to the CCUA plant, where the wells are planted, there's just, it's, it's a big, 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 complex thing that a lot of us take for granted that we can just turn on our water tap and have clean water. And that's something we need to be grateful for. And a lot of work goes into that and I appreciated being a part of that tour. And after the day, high praise from the, received a letter from the ambassador of that, that basically said the ever seen and sent a letter which made, made me proud because that's, that's a Bel Air school, also in a game on CBS where Bel Air, the name Bel Air, it's not in Wichita. They mentioned Bel Air and I appreciate him leading the charge to make sure that, that the broadcasters and that the national broadcast know that's a Bel Air school. In the next few weeks...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just report that the 37th and Wood Lawn de-annexation that this council approved in April, I believe it was March or April, this council approved it only on condition that Wichita would complete their end of the annexation and they completed that this December. So that property is now annexed, it belongs to Wichita. That intersection is a lot safer in as far as law enforcement, managing accidents, getting in that intersection, the maintenance of the road and snow removal, all of that has been cleared up by that de-annexation there to provide utility easements for Wichita to be able to access their utility features on the side of the road. And so we're working on getting that ready for you to sign. And if you would approve that, then the entire process would be complete. Wichita can get access to their utilities and the intersection is, it belongs to them. And that's all, Mr. Mayor.
Move to our city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a few items. First of all, the chamber, Bel Air Chamber meets tomorrow and it's actually here at City Hall. We had hoped to have it at the Bel Air Recovery Center and tour, but that has been moved to the March meeting. So if anybody was attending or hoping to get a tour of the Bel Air Recovery Center, that will be March. So the chamber meeting is here tomorrow. Some, some things that are coming up in the near future, Spring Festival's been set for April 13th. So we're in February already, so it's coming up pretty quickly. Party for Parkinson's 5K that they have annually at the Catholic Care Center, that's April 27th. And then we've set the shredding and e-recycling for May 4th. It's always the first weekend in May, so that will stay. And then the last thing about upcoming opportunities for our citizens is, you remember a few meetings ago, Mike Tan from the Wichita Transit was here talking about all the things that they've been working with, with the school district and things that they're looking for expansion. He and I have met and as he had mentioned when he was here, there might be some opportunities to actually come and serve Bel Air. So he and I worked together on putting a survey out and... So he and I worked together on putting a survey out, and I've sent that to all of our local businesses to get their input as to whether they think that's important. And then there's also a second piece to that survey to the employees to gauge whether they would be interested in utilizing some transit. So I've sent that out, and then we're also sending a separate one out to our citizens to see if there's interest there as well. And we've put together a Survey Monkey that people can go to and gather that information or share their information as well. And so we just put that together this week, just started sending out the surveys, the different folks. And so our citizens should be watching social media so that they can go and take Survey Monkey. And then we'll gather all that information, also included the seniors. That was something that we, another group that we included. So we'll gather that information. I hope to have it all back by mid-February and then I'll send it over to Mr. Tan, and then we'll talk some more about whether he thinks there's some feasibility and interest in actually them bringing a route up here. He had talked about what might be very positive for them and the community would be they stop at 37th and Woodlawn now to actually come on up to 53rd Street and over, past the high school. We already know that they work with 259. So it'd go by Isley, by the high school, and then over to the Sunflower Commerce Park, and then down to, down Webb, because they again go up to about 40th and, well, they go up to the Wichita Technical College over there. So they're right up here and it would be easy for them to add a little loop in and benefit some citizens and some businesses. So we'll, I'll let you know as we get that, those surveys back and what the interest is and visit with him on some possibilities of that happening. And then the last thing is, we all know what the weather's like outside, and I know Public Works, I talked to them earlier today, and they've got their crews out and they'll be out all night treating roads and such to make sure things are safe in the morning for our citizens. So, thank you, Mayor.
All right. I appreciate that. I appreciate Public Works and everything they do. Yeah. Going to move now into ordinances, resolutions, and final actions. And the first thing to come before us this evening, item A is consideration of adopting the 2019 City of Bel Air legislative platform. And Councilmember Benage talked a little bit about this in his report. The Kansas legislate, legislators, legislature is now in session, and there will be bills that affect cities and affects cities like Bel Air. So at our last workshop in January, we reviewed the League of Kansas Municipalities adopted platform and went through all of that. That was on the 17th and had a lot of discussion over that is, over all of that because they had a lot in that. But it's good to have that, that we can have what the, where our stance is as a city so that we can have those talking points to talk with our representatives and senators if and when the bill gets introduced that would affect us. So I'm glad that we would have something in place for that in case we should ever need it. But the, it's in our packet, the notes and the changes from what we discussed at our January 17th workshop. So want to see if there are any changes or questions or comments.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I do have a question on the tax lid repeal. I thought in our workshop we had talked about modifying that rather than repealing it because the way it's currently stated is tied to an index. And that's a problem with, for cities that are growing because you grow faster than the index, but you can only increase your taxes by the index. The way it's current, way it's stated right now is just a sort of appeal. But if other council members would care to comment on that, I appreciate that because I want to make sure I didn't misunderstand something there.
Jim, I guess I just had a question for you. What was your proposed change of the tax that we have?
Well, the, rather than just repeal it, I think that it's appropriate for the state to have a tax lid out there for us. But the index is the problem because the index ties the city to too slow of growth if you're in a rapid growth situation. And that makes it so you can't support a growth in police force or growth in other services the city offers to the citizens. So that's a problem that the state has created with this tax lid because they tied it to an index that may not grow as fast as the city does.
And I remember, you know, we went through this and, you know, with the tax lid, I mean, that's something that can really hamper growth and really control us and take away a lot of home rule, which a lot of this focuses on, you know, the fact that home rule has been invaded, if you will. I'll use that language. So I think that's why we had originally said that we wanted to repeal the tax lid on that, just to, you know, let us have that control.
Mr. Mayor, I do remember that discussion. I recall our primary concern was how the tax lid is implemented, so I wouldn't be opposed to adding some clarification to that respect there.
The legislature revisited...
Mr. Mayor, can we have the language, strongly support?
I think, the first you said, strongly recommend amending the tax.
Because it could be amended in different ways.
Right. Because that's going to go all over the place, the discussion, and we'd view it a little bit naive to think we could just tell them how they need to sell. I think we would.
Perhaps we could say that we strongly support amending the tax lid in a way that doesn't hinder cities experiencing rapid growth, so that our concern about how it hinders a city experiencing rapid growth can be expressed in that policy.
Yeah. I like that. I think that would work. I think that solves a lot of, I appreciate you bringing that up.
Okay. And then there were just two minor typo issues that probably should be fixed whenever you're ready. So I'm sure I got the right one here. Okay, asset forfeiture, it says size, it said a C's. And then under body camera, I think you just had the word buy instead of body.
And just so the public knows, I think we counted them. What, there's what, 73 or 74 of these that we went through in our workshop? And yeah, so I do appreciate the fact that we were able to have that long discussion at the workshop because this is important. This is important, we stand up for our city and for what we need for our growth and our future and to have some of that home rule. I do appreciate all the work that our legislators do in Topeka. We want to certainly work with them as well. So are there any other changes or corrections or suggestions from any of the council members?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I had a couple. In page four, law enforcement and public safety, the second statement, I think, the second sentence that is, I think it's maybe missing a word or I'm not quite sure how it should be rephrased, but it currently reads, "State and federal mandates that involve law enforcement are not positive or may not be in the best interest of the communities." Are we missing a word there or is it just kind of worded awkwardly?
We can, I think we can do it successfully with just taking out "are not positive."
Right.
Or, and then it becomes "involve law enforcement, may not be in the best interest of..."
Yeah, I think that sounds right. That may have been a revision that was modified.
Well, not like we didn't give our attorney a whole bunch of stuff at that meeting.
That's right. No, and then I had one other on page eight. So we had, there were two headings for tax abatements. Were they both, I couldn't recall this, the first one that talks about the star bonds, is that, is that also a tax abatement heading? Or is there, I didn't know if that was a...
It would probably fall under that because it'd be a special district if one were created.
Right. Okay. That's all I had, just wanted to make sure that that was accurate.
In that case, it seems the second statement on tax abatements might be more generic and be also inclusive of the specific statement on star bonds.
Right.
Or possibly combining with this?
Yeah. Or possibly eliminate this statement on star bonds specifically since the overall generic statement below.
Is this, is this based on what the LCAN is going over? So they, did they have this as two separate issues that they were talking about star bonds individually and...
Yeah.
And tax abatements individually? Because if so, we need to, I think we need to leave it separate and make sure that we are clear on both issues.
I think star bonds are definitely worth getting their own heading, whether it's the same or different.
Maybe we just...
Yeah, the first one, just change it to star bonds.
Yeah.
That's all, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
So we have the change that's a star bonds, we have the, taken out the, where'd? Public safety and then the thing that Councilman Benage brought forward. So I guess we would need to entertain a motion to approve it as amended for our discussion today.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve as amended the 2019 City of Bel Air legislative platform as amended and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
First and second. Any other questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. And I just want to, and show my gratitude and appreciation to our staff and city attorney, especially for going over these numerous things that we didn't even get into after the first of the year. So the fact that we can have that workshop and be ready for this. Okay, item B is consideration of a quote to install a fountain in the north and south lakes of Central Parks. There's two retention ponds there that are owned by the city. So as such, that means the city is responsible for maintenance. If you drove through this summer, you probably noticed the, the film, the algae that, the layer that was across it that causes all kinds of problems. And I know staff has looked at and tried a bunch of different options to do that and are recommending fountains that will be put in. And this is not a fancy, but this is a fountain to keep the water moving so that hopefully algae doesn't settle and cause those problems. And Ann Stevens is here if we were to have any questions of her or if there's anything you'd like to explain that I didn't say.
I think you pretty much have it. Several years ago, we experienced a pretty severe algae problem in both lakes, and we've tried several options. One that we do normally is dyeing the lakes, so they're, put some safe, water-safe dye in it to make them darker, to prevent more sunlight from getting through, to hopefully prevent the algae growth. It helps marginally. We were also told of a company that can put a chemical in the lake that is safe for fish, but it will prevent the algae growth. That was used fairly successfully for the last two years. That chemical and that outfit that administers that chemical is no longer available to us. So we've been looking at other options. The fountain that we have in Quail Ridge is probably one of the best options that we have at this point moving forward. It does keep the water moving, so the algae is not as prevalent. In my homeowners association, we do have a small pond and had a similar problem, installed a very similar fountain, and we have not had any algae problems for, since that fountain has been installed. So this is a good option. It does improve. It's in a good amenity for the neighborhood, so it'll be a fountain in each of the lakes. So very nice as you're walking past it or driving past it, as well as dealing with the unsightly algae issue.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Do we feel confident that one fountain in each of the fountains is going to be enough to alleviate the algae problem?
Yes.
Do we have an estimate of what maintenance costs of these fountains it might run?
I do not before me. The maintenance will not be any different than the fountain that we have at Quail Ridge, which is fairly minimal.
So before us this evening is, what is it, a bid there from Professional Turf Products? And they would actually come out and install the fountains and do all that, so it's not, our staff's not doing it, they do that. And asking for the cost not to exceed $27,000. Do we know when these would be installed if it were to be approved this evening?
If it were to be approved this evening, it would be installed in the spring.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
In our packet, we have the quote for the fountains from Professional Turf Products, and then we also have an item from Atlas Electric. Will Professional, the Professional Turf Company be working with the electric company or will we be working with them separately?
They will be, we will be coordinating. They will be working together to accomplish this, so it'll be a seamless product.
Okay. And looking through this, I mean, $27,000, that's kind of like the absolute worst-case scenario, right?
Correct.
We're hoping, I think, what, the one that you submitted was more like closer to the $20,000, so, but I understand, good to have just in cases.
It was the $20,000 with, for the turf and then the Atlas was the additional seven. So we do, as Ty mentioned, we spent about $7,500 per year on chemicals for the last two years. So we'll make up that money fairly quickly.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I think that sounds like a good idea with a pretty good payback, and I'd like to make a motion to accept the quote from Professional Turf Products and Atlas Electric to install two fountains in Central Park at a cost not to exceed $27,000 and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
We have a first and two seconds. Any other questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Let's move right along. Item C, cured-in-place rehab of certain sewer mains. This is Pearson's addition. You can see there on the screen, every year, part of our budget goes towards repairs and improvements to sewer mains across our city. Staff feels that a cured-in-place rehab to certain sewer mains in the Pearson addition is economical and also less disruptive to the citizens, which both are sounding like two very good things in my mind. And again, Ann Stevens from Public Works is here. I'd like to ask you to explain a little bit more about this, about the process, and answer any questions we may have.
Well, I brought show and tell, which is always good. This does come apart, and that's just because I've been playing with it for quite a while. I've had this for several years. But this is a very similar liner. It's a different company. It's a very similar liner to what will be installed in the sewer mains. So if you can pass that to Jeff. So the process...
Elsaf gets it last. Remember.
No.
Okay.
No, that is a sample. No sewage has been run through that. The process is fairly simple. They go through and they clean the lines fairly thoroughly to make sure, and then televise at the same time. So they know, they see what cracks there are, what missing pieces there are. There's protruding taps where you have the sewer main and the service tap actually pushes into the sewer main, causing a little bit of a blockage. Those will be removed. They see where, if there's any issues with the line that they don't think they can bridge with the product. It is fairly stiff, so it can bridge quite a few gaps. Anything that they feel they cannot bridge will need a point repair, which...
Um, anything that they feel they cannot bridge will need a point repair, which is actually dug up and fixed prior to the lining. After reviewing the tapes that we have, they don't feel as though there are any point repairs. However, you never quite know exactly what you're getting into and things change. Um, so after all of that is found, they take note of where the sewer taps are in relation to the manholes, so they can build this, it's basically a s- a sleeve, like, kind of like the ca, when you get your arm in a cast. It's a very similar material. It's inside-out. They will push it and they will invert it with steam. It'll be steamed cured, so it'll form to the shape of the pipe. And then once that is cured, they'll go with a automatic, like rotor cutter and cut all the sewer taps open, so the sewage can start flowing again. It's a fairly quick process. Um, was it about four to six hours from beginning to end?
Depending on the length of the, the, the run or the shot of it is, it's...
Yeah.
Within a day's time for, for run, manhole to manhole.
So it's, it's fairly quick process. This, the sewage is, or the, the homeowners are not out of service for very long, so it's, it's fairly quick. I've used it before in my previous consulting works, done a great job. There are several companies that do this. UMC happens to be local, um, the other companies. There's one, I believe, in Missouri. Uh, well, the, the other two are in Missouri, then there's one in Hudson, Iowa. So, it's great to support a local company. The prices are very competitive. And we have a fairly small job compared to the other ones that get let out. So, we're not going to get much better pricing if we go look for, for an area, because they're going to be having mobilization costs that UMC does not have.
So if I remember right, I read that, uh, you take care of notifying all the, all the residents that, when you're doing the projects, so they, they don't use their, uh...
Correct. Yes. We, we do it in sections, and so whenever we go into a certain neighborhood or a certain section of houses, we can notice...
Sir, I'm going to ask you, if you can come to the microphone and say your, your name and the company you're with, and we'll...
Sorry. Uh, Air Urban Utility Maintenance Contractors, uh, to answer your question. We notify the homeowners, uh, with a leaflet on their door prior to going in there to let them know that we'll be in the neighborhood doing some work and, uh, typically put a towel or something like that over any, uh, toilets to, just in case there were to be any sorts of backups or any air that comes through, which is a pretty standard process for any cleaning of sewer lines and things like that.
But how much advanced notice do you give of that?
I believe we place those the week prior to when we come out. I believe it's within seven days.
I know a lot of people don't use their front door, so...
Sure.
You know, you put a leaflet on the door, it may be a few days before they see it.
And it has our name and phone number, contact information, everything on that. If, if they have questions or anything, they can contact us.
And, and we'll also put it out on social media and everything too, so it won't just be a letter from the other way. So appreciate that. And this is a, you know, a, and I appreciate the, uh, explanation, because you got a full replacement. This is a, looks like a lot of money, but this is a lot cheaper than the full replacement and, uh, eliminating the need to, uh, replace that line, which like you said, can get costly. And appreciate you guys looking out for the homeowner and the citizen, um, with this bid.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
How long do these linings typically last?
The design life on the product is 50 years. So, and the technology has been being used for 35-plus, 40 years all over the country.
Is there a warranty on the installation?
I believe our warranty, the standard, I believe, is one year. You know, uh, i- is a pretty standard warranty for the industry and for us. Uh, like I mentioned, you know, with, with the installation of the product, we do a post-TV right after everything's installed. Uh, that confirms that everything in the pipe is hardened out and cured out properly. Once that's cured out and then verified with that post-TV inspection, it's basically a brand-new pipe inside of that pipe that's fully cured out, hardened, and is in place.
If something's going to go wrong, it's going to be in the first year.
You'll notice it right, exactly.
Yeah, right away, okay.
If I remember that example, it was about three-eighths th- thick, is that correct?
It's, I believe the, the standard is six mil, six millimeters.
Six mils?
Yes.
Thanks.
Any councilmembers have questions or...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
One other question. I was just looking at the, uh, the, the, the road diagram that shows where the sewer lines are running. Um, can you talk a little bit about how these specific lines were, were picked? Were these just the, you know, the, the worst, you know, four sewer lines up to, you know, our budgeted amount? Or how, how were these lines specifically selected?
They're the worst ones in Bel Air.
Yes. Uh, we, a- as you recall, we have done some televising and cleaning of lines periodically through different subdivisions. These are, after reviewing those tapes, these are the worst lines that were picked. We knew we had a budget of $150,000 that we were given, and we picked sewer lines using a budget number per linear foot to figure out how much, approximately how much we could afford to do, leaving some wiggle room, if we had any protruding taps or needing point repairs, to give us some cushion there. So yes, they, they are the worst. Um, I would highly suggest, you know, as we keep moving forward, doing more as we have the funds available, but this is definitely a good start.
Okay.
And how old are these lines currently that were...
These lines were probably put in when that, when the Pearson's was put in, so 40, 50 years old.
And this is in our budget to cover this, so we're, we're good to go on that?
Yes.
No issues with that? And, and as part of the ongoing maintenance of running the city?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
To my knowledge, and Ann, correct me if I'm wrong, but, uh, Pearson's really hasn't had anything done as far as sewer lines since it's been built.
The only thing we have, we replaced the sewer line down Trib 7, which is that waterway, um, that kind of runs through the eastern edge. That's, yeah, that's still Pearson's.
Oh, okay.
Kind of between Gunnison and Danbury, that area. Um, we did replace that with the project in 2014, and we have been doing manhole rehabilitation and Pearson's addition. So they have had some, um, but it, it's the worst sewer lines in the city, so they have not had a whole lot of sewer line specific, except for that one trunk line.
Right. Other than sewer backups that...
That we go out and...
One time I know...
And a lot of that was due to root intrusion, and this process will sealing up all of those open areas.
Well, Mr. Mayor, uh, some of the people have asked questions on this, and I personally feel that for this price, we should go ahead and do it now, because, uh, I don't want to be paying for a sewer backup in somebody's house. Because I think that one was, was an awful lot of money that they sued the city back years ago. It went into the basement. And I don't think this is, it's not going to get any cheaper. That's all I have.
What are these lines currently made of?
They are currently made of vitrified clay pipe.
Clay pipe, okay.
That's all they had back in the seventies.
Yeah, at one time they came to PVC.
From Utility Maintenance Contractors, the line in certain sewer mains in Pearson's addition at a cost not to exceed $204,934.40 and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
First, and we have a second. Any other questions or comments or concerns? Just so everybody knows, at Pearson's addition, this is old Bel Air there, over there by, uh, you know, from Edgemore to Woodlawn, line of 45th Street.
Mr. Mayor? I, I may have missed, when, when would this start? The, the work actually start on this?
As of now, if we're to receive approval tonight, um, we would be looking at the spring here, I would say, and I think the working, it should be completed within about a month, six weeks, four to six week timeframe when we start. The hope would be, I would say, by, by the end of March to end of April would be our, our goal.
And everybody remember the three Ps? So, the other motion, um, and the second. Any other questions or comments before I call for the vote? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Okay. Thank you. And appreciate you being here and, uh, sitting through the long meeting to get to this.
Absolutely. Thanks for asking me. Thank you.
You bet. Okay, item D is, uh, the, an ordinance adopting the recodification of ordinances. Um, this is a 2018 addition that we do, um, you know, we do this kind of every year to look at that. And, let's see, um, Jackie, do you want to talk a little bit about, more a little bit about how codification, that way we're just put everything in line with where we're supposed to be and, and what the state requires and all that?
Exactly. Um, Mr. Mayor, codification is, um, as ordinances get passed throughout the year, they all lose their specific ordinance number that they're given before council meeting and are merged into actual chapters and articles within our standing code. And that happens, uh, typically in the first month of each year. Um, this year, our primary, uh, ordinances that we're addressing are all law enforcement ordinances that are, um, recommended to be adopted through, by the state. So the state puts together a uniform code of police, a uniform code of public offenses, and most cities adopt that outright and exempt themselves from certain, um, sections that they deem not applicable to their local, uh, area. So, what we're doing through this process is we're adopting the uniform code for 2018, noting the changes, repealing ordinances that no longer apply because they've been adopted in the, the, um, uniform code. For instance, the, uh, littering ordinance, criminal littering, I believe, is what it, so criminal littering, we had in our code, we had a specific criminal littering ordinance. However, this year, the uniform code adopted a criminal littering ordinance. So when we're adopting the entire uniform code, we're going to get rid of ours and use the one in the uniform code that uses the same language. So a lot of that cleanup work, that makes it easy for our officers to refer to this uniform code when they, uh, make stops and such.
Any other questions or comments? Now I entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move to approve an ordinance adopting the recodification of ordinances of the City of Bel Air, Kansas, 2018 addition, providing for the effective date thereof, providing of the repeal of certain other ordinances not included therein, saving certain ordinances from repeal and saving certain accrued rights and liabilities and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
We have a first and two seconds again. Probably have a city clerk to pick those.
Jeff can handle it.
There's, uh, there's not any other questions or comments? Since it is an ordinance, it does call for a roll, a roll call vote. Councilmember Binaj?
Aye.
Councilmember Elsoff?
Aye.
Councilmember Hawes?
Aye.
Councilmember Martin?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
It passes. Final item on our agenda this evening is consideration of a letter of support for infrastructure. Uh, this is for a grant application by the City of Wichita as well as Central County to rebuild the, uh, north juncture, junction there, K-254, I-135, K-235, and K-96. Um, all of us have used or regularly use, um, this, uh, junction. Uh, the reconstruction would no doubt, in my opinion, uh, directly benefit our citizens and our businesses. Uh, the county and the city of Wichita have asked for letters of support from Bel Air to be included in their infrastructure for rebuilding America Grant Packet. Uh, we heard earlier from Councilmember Hawes that the 254, uh, task force has already agreed that they will submit one, and I would certainly encourage, uh, that we sign this as well.
Mr. Mayor, I motion to be approved, a letter of support for the INFRA grant application by the City of Wichita and Central County for the reconstruction of the north junction and authorize the mayor to sign.
A second.
First and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. So we'll do that. Discussion and future issues, we do have a workshop scheduled for next Tuesday. Uh, does that still work for everybody at 6:30 on the 12th? Okay, we'll go ahead and continue with that. We do have a, a number of items to discuss, including, uh, phase one of the, uh, Bel Air Commons, so we'll, uh, hear back from Jeff Best, and then we talked a lot about that, and he's going to have further breakdown for us. Uh, also want to go over a number of marketing updates, um, including what Councilmember Binaj brought, uh, his idea, um, at our last workshop. And it's never too early to start budget review, even though we won't do that until this summer, but, uh, starting on that. Uh, is there anything else that anybody would like to see on the agenda for our workshop next week? If not, I think that's plenty, so we'll keep that.
Yeah.
And, uh, look for that. I have no need for an executive session. There's, uh, staff or any other council member?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
We have first and second to adjourn at 9:00 PM exactly. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. We are adjourned.
Okay, next time, next meeting, we need our seconds a little bit longer. That was part of the workshop.